I'd like to call this May 13th, regular council meeting, daughter. Would everybody please rise? While we're having a moment of silence, let's all remember Dr. McElvein who passed away this week. Dr. McElvein served 50 years in Bristol Borough as a family doctor. And in 1954, Dr. McElvein was involved in bringing advanced medicine to Lower Bux Hospital. He also was the first doctor to serve on the Lower Bux Hospital Board of Directors. So he devoted his life to this town, so as we have a moment of silence, let's remember him. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with anything, first of all, just want to bring to everybody's attention that's home watching the meeting at tomorrow at the Bristol Borough Baseball Field Complex. There'll be three games held tomorrow. At 3:30, Holy Ghost Prep Boys Baseball will verse Bristol High School. At 5:30, Bristol will verse Truman in Girls Softball. And following that game, probably around 7:00, 7:30, Pensbury will verse Neshamity. And all this is to benefit Jeanie Shopcott, who is battling cancer at home, and there's going to be a bake sale and a lot of things that are going on tomorrow. So wear your green for Jean and come out tomorrow and support her and her family and keep her in your prayers. The other thing I'd like to mention that everybody knows that's driving around Bristol, I'm sure you know there's an election coming. So if all candidates on, no matter which side you're on or what you're doing, please, if you would be kind to take all your signs down that were put up, no later than Friday after the election, to make our town get back to its original beauty, I think it would be appreciated whether you win or lose. I'm asking that everybody take their signs down that were put up throughout town. I think people have been looking at them long enough, and I think if we can get them down by next Friday would be an accomplishment for everybody.
Ralph, just sort of making, can I make one quick announcement?
Sure.
On next Saturday, May 18th, John Hill, many of you may know him, John Hill is running a Monte Carlo night, a casino night at the Clock Tower, and it benefits the DeBora Heart &amp; Lung Foundation Hospital in New Jersey that John works for. He does very hard work for it. Should be a great event, and tickets are still available if you'd like to try to contact John for that. They're $50 a ticket, and it goes from 7:00 to 11:00 on May 18th. Thank you.
Okay, could I have a roll call, Ms. Fields?
Mr. Devon?
Here.
Mr. Stavertine? Mr. Pezza?
Here.
Mr. Cullen? Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Trenell?
Here.
Mr. Kleinske?
Here.
Mr. De Giuseppe?
Here. Just for the record, I know Lorraine is in bed with a severe stomach virus. Hopefully she don't need to be taken to the hospital because she's dehydrating, but that's the reason she's not here.
Pat's at his daughter's, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Tom.
I was going to say, Pat's at his daughter's honors night at Bristol High School, so he's not going to be here. He wanted me to let everyone out.
Our first presentation is going to be by the Riverside Theater. They have a presentation for the play that's coming up. Whoever wants is Keith, whatever group you want to bring up.
Where's the best place to stand right here?
Right there.
Oh, excuse me. Hi, I'm Raina Adams. I'm the marketing director at Bristol Riverside Theater, and I'm going to invite up some of our cast members from our next production, Inherit the Wind. So if you can all please come up, say your name and the role you're playing, please.
My name is Maggie Jar, and I'm playing Mrs. Blair.
Kelly states, I'm also playing Mrs. Blair.
Betty Galatto, and I'm playing Mrs. Loomis.
Donna Kayford, and I'm playing Mrs. Taylor, the court stenographer.
I'm Matt Lyden. I'm playing both mayor of Hillsborough and Mr. Taylor.
Thank you all so much for inviting us over here to do this little presentation for you this evening. This is a very important project for us and a very interesting one. A lot of people know the title, Inherit the Wind, and not a lot of people know what the play is about. It's a real American classic play. It's about the Scopes Trial that happened in Dayton, Tennessee in the summer of 1925. It concerns a young man who broke the law by teaching evolution in his classroom. And that brought to bear many forces around the United States, from the ACLU to great biblical scholars, to William Jennings Bryan, who had run for president three times, was Secretary of State. They all came together in this town to discuss and to go through this trial of this man who had broken this law. Clarence Darrell was the attorney for the young man. So the play is about that situation. One of the reasons that we were able to involve the community, as we have, is the play's extremely large, because it actually asks there to be the entire town of Dayton, in the play, it's called Hillsborough, onstage. And so it gave us a wonderful opportunity to invite up to, I think, almost 40 now, different people from Bristol who came and auditioned for the parts, who wanted to be in the play. We are now at the latter end of the second week of rehearsals. We have one more week to go, and so we have this wonderful collaboration between professional actors and the actors from the town creating this play for us. It has been an awesome experience. We have been so pleased to work with them and to get to know them, and we hope that we can do this many times in the future, because they are very talented people and just utterly dedicated. So I hope that everybody will come out and see them. The play runs for three weeks, from May the 22nd through June 9th. And what we would like everyone to know is that because of the borough's help, on our preview nights, which are May 21st, that's Tuesday night, and May 22nd, Wednesday night, anyone who lives in Bristol Borough can attend the play for $5. All they need to do is show some ID that has their address on it at the box office, and they will get in for $5 and be able to see the play, which I think is a terrific opportunity, not only for the word to get out, but also just again with our interrelationship with the community that we value so much and that we want to participate in what goes on at the theater. The shows start at 7:30, and those preview nights once again are Tuesday and Wednesday, May 21st and May 22nd. And we thank the borough so much for supporting us and helping us do this.
Thank you for all you do for the community, Keith.
And what courage you guys have.
Yeah.
Break a leg.
Here are some of our postcards. I'll leave them outside here if anybody wants to pick them up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvester.
Break a leg.
Okay, I know we have somebody here this evening who has several more meetings to attend, so at this time I'd like to call up our county commissioner, our Democrat county commissioner. Diane Marsaglia.
We generally refer to her as the lone Democrat.
There you go. Well, it's great to be here, and thank you for letting me come on the early part of the meeting. And I just wanted to come on behalf of the county and express my appreciation for your patience in working with us on the dock project, and to be able to confirm that we will be able to come up with the funding so that you'll be able to see that project all the way through. The county knows that Bristol is the gateway to our beautiful county, and now that it will be the dockway to the county, it's even better. We are expecting big things out of this, and we're glad to be supportive. I do want to thank also Councilman De Giuseppe and Councilman Trenell, because you really worked with me, and I know that this was at times trying and difficult, but it is, you know how government is, sometimes it works that way. But thank you for persevering.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Because I know my partner had a lot to do with this.
She certainly did.
I know she did.
Do you have a date in mind when you're going to get started, when you're going to be ready?
Well, we have samples that they already started doing some dredging and determining how deep they would have to go. And right now, from what we hear, everything is great.
Good.
There's no extra dredging that has to be done or anything.
Well, we have a commissioners meeting all Wednesday, so we hope to tie everything up then and get you checks for whatever's necessary.
Well, I'm just glad that the county's going to come up with the full amount that we need, and the federal government through their fishing boat, and we'll be able to pull this project off.
Maybe you could put some boats there next to those ducks.
Yeah, next to the ducks.
Yeah, she texted me, what's with the ducks, so.
This is the first, you know, town or borough I've ever been to that had ducks and everybody's seen.
Welcome to Bristol.
There's an event being taken place through landmark towns.
In June.
Yeah, it's the canal thing.
Oh, great.
It's about ducks.
Right, oh, that's a great idea.
So they gave us all a duck.
I just wanted to know why his duck is bigger than mine's.
Oh, I'm not touching it. Okay.
She's not going to touch it.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure working together.
Diane, I know you got to.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you very much. Everybody at home that wants to know where the borough's going to get the balance to complete the project, the county has just guaranteed the entire $1 million to the borough. While we're talking about money, I also have a check here this evening for recreation. And I don't know if everybody remembers, about six months ago, we negotiated a deal with the Amish, who wanted to rent some of, lease some of our ground, and we decided we would do this lease for $50,000. $25,000 upfront and $5,000 a year for five years. So they gave us our first check today for $25,000, which I'll have the manager deposit. And this money is allocated for recreation.
This is great, people just keep giving us money.
Their project is not going to start maybe for six months or a year, so they just, but they wanted to get us to, Billy, why don't you speak on that?
Yes, we heard from the attorney for the Amish last week, let us know that they may push off the beginning of the development until early next year, but he didn't want to hold up anything else, especially this payment on the ground lease. So what we agreed is that all the documents for this land development would be signed, the payment on the lease would be made, and until they're ready to pull their permits, the only thing they won't do as part of this is they won't submit their security for the improvements. They have to put up security for the public improvements. So they won't do that until they're ready to pull the permits, but other than that, everything's been signed. The plans will be signed and recorded, and we'll be on our way. Most of this has taken place behind the building, so the public's not even going to know what's going on. It has to do with parking lots and underground stormwater storage. But they, John Stolffus, who's the owner, felt that he didn't want to hold us up on this lease payment, so we're going to go ahead with that.
Okay, so basically, if we get this $2.5 million, this council has now drawn almost $13 million in grant money into Bristol over the last eight years. So it's a great accomplishment. While we're talking finances, we're going to have a very, very brief presentation from our finance director, Paul Furlong, who's here this evening, that invests our pension funds and usually comes in every four or five months, so it's about time, and I forgot he was coming this evening, but.
I have seven handouts.
That's fine.
Two should I give them to our sitting.
Here.
To your favorites, just give them to your favorites.
The finance guy, you always want him brief, it's very dry stuff.
You want to hear the finance guy's going to be brief, no matter what, right?
I made a brief inventory report, too.
If you'd like to do it. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to pension. Yes, please.
Know what she's looking at? He said one for Robin, and I said, Robin's not going to know what she's looking at.
Do you need one?
I don't need one, I'm good.
We'll make copies.
If we look at the landscape report, it's a, just a summary. We were chosen by you and your group back in January of 2005 to take over the uniform and non-uniform pension. The original deposit, if we want to go to the second page, this is really just, it's a very detailed line item by line item that tells you how it's done every single month since we've had the funds. The original investment or the rollover for both was $4.787 million. It was January of 2005. And this is, again, this is a month by month, play by play, whether there was a net deposit or net withdrawal. A net withdrawal would mean that more money was taken out than deposited, and that's just the general life of the pensions. There's a, I guess, a challenge. But the good news here, and we had talked about this, I think one of the reasons you had chosen us, Ralph, was that we, my partner, Tim Gormly, is not here. We are ardent believers in managing risk. If you can manage risk, you will get return. So, but working with the actuaries and everything, we're given a return target, and we wanted to try to get that return with the least amount of risk. So that's, I think, what is one of the appealing parts to us running the money. So if we sort of just scroll to the very last page of this report, and I'm making this as brief as possible, this is sort of the, I guess, the bottom line, as you like to ask us, what's the bottom line, guys? So the original $4.787 million that was deposited in January of 2005, there's actually been net withdrawals. So if you take from over the last seven odd years, $260,000 is actually, more has been taken out than put in. Okay, so the $4.787 million actually really had a net investment of $4,527,000. Today, that's worth $6.1 million. So you've actually made in return 1.662 million, which is good news.
Yeah, really good.
And remember, this is going through the worst financial crisis in 80 years. The last time you saw a stock market collapse like this was in 1928. So you've managed to bear with the, there was downside, it was a brief period, but it only lasted about nine months, where the stock market took, I mean, years to come back. Now, because there's demands on the money, you have to have assets, you have to have investments in stock, you have to bear volatility, but if we can balance that with enough fixed income investments, you'll do fine, and you have. So that's sort of the end. If there's any questions on that, I can answer those. And just to sort of, this other detailed report, and this is where the story sort of, I guess, comes to a conclusion. Something about a portfolio snapshot, it's on page three of 11. This is, I guess, would tell you, are we doing what you're asking us to do? So on page three of 11, in the upper left-hand, called a risk analysis, and this is just over the last decade. Now, this portfolio hasn't been here, but this, we track rolling returns over 10-year periods and make sure we're managing risk. This portfolio has actually managed to get 100% of the stock returns with about half the risk. Now, it's not a guarantee of the future, but I think if we can continue to do what you're asking us to do, Ralph was stick, you know, he was on the phone with us a lot during the dark days, making sure that we were managing the risk.
Paul and Tim was afraid to come into Bristol when things were getting bad.
We were fine, but yeah, it was, yeah, I mean, we really, you put us to the test, you know, you were on us and, you know.
Well, we always had faith in you and your partner, I can tell you that. But if you, this $260,000 that was withdrawn for pensions, that's everybody, just so everybody knows, that's everybody that's retired from the borough that's drawing a pension. Every month, they get a pension check which comes out of this fund. It's not to pay people, it's not to put windows in the building, it's to pay everybody's pension, so everybody understands why, when he says withdraw, that's to pay whoever, whether husband and wife, or if a husband passed away and the wife's still collecting a pension, and you still made $1,662,000 over the course of the investment, which I think is outstanding. Guess we'll see you in September, October.
Whenever you'd like, you just tell us, and we'll be here. I'll leave this section copy.
Paul, thank you for coming in. Okay, we have three gentlemen here, Ed Cascade.
Cacase.
Can I say it?
Cacase.
Cacasey. Chris Cacasey and Steve Leon, who are the people that are interested in the Mill Run project that we've been privately meeting with over the last six months. Councilman Pezzic, Councilman Cullen, myself, the borough manager, Bob Way from the Redevelopment Authority, several meetings here with many, many groups. And I think that after the last meeting we had, Lorraine and Greg feel very comfortable and confident in their group. They're from Marsville, they're right here, local, they did a lot of projects with the Redevelopment Authority, they know that what the two council people are pushing for in that ward aesthetically and what kind of facility it's going to be, and they have never once said that they couldn't meet our needs, no matter how many meetings we had. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Chris, Ed, and Steve, if you would go to the podium, and they'll give us a brief presentation on what they want to do and where they want to take the project to. And to my left, if you notice, there's a board here, which they'll talk about, which is their vision for what they want Mill Run to look like. And to my right, if you look, there's stone, there's a board with stone here, I'm sure Matt's getting it on TV, and a board with porcelain tile that would be putting some of the ribbons and different things that really aesthetically, I think the two council people from that ward stress that they want this building to pop, and they want it to be a state-of-the-art facility. And the last meeting we had, they came back and they met everything that Greg and Lorraine really has been pushing for. So I'll turn it over to you and give council a brief presentation on where we're at and where you want to go with it.
Okay. Again, my name is Ed Cacasey, my partner, Chris Cacasey, and Steve Leonie from Spiezle Architectural. We are looking to do a personal care, assisted living, independent living facility, and Mill Run. We are looking to, we're not sure quite how many beds are going to be in the facility right now, and again, Steve will explain a little more in detail, some of the architectural that we'll be putting into the facility. And, you know, Steve, you might as well just start.
Sure.
Again, any questions you do have, we will answer whatever we can.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Steve Leonie with Spiezle Group, I'm a principal at the firm, and I've been working with Ed and Chris to develop some guidelines and some criteria for the building, starting to look at test fits for the building, and also to see really how we can clean up the building and make it more presentable to the community. The building has really good bones, meaning that the structure is solid, so there's a lot of viability to the building in rehabilitating it. Just about everything else within or part of the building is probably, however, going to be removed and discarded. The interior walls, the plaster, the drywall, the equipment, the furniture and the finishes, because the building has been lean, fallow, and abandoned, is really material that needs to be discarded. So regardless, aside from the fact that the structure of the building is quite solid, just about every other component of the building will be discarded. What will happen in its place is a complete renovation of the interior as well as the exterior. All of the, what we call the curtain wall, the glazing systems, the glass and the metal that you see will be replaced. It'll be insulated units, it'll be units that will include operable units, meaning windows that can open and close for the residents that will inhabit, rather than what you see now, which is a closed, thermetically sealed facility. It'll have a higher energy efficiency rating to it, it'll obviously have a much better curb appeal just by the replacement of the glazing systems. In addition to that, on the lower level, the building is approximately 78,000 square feet, there's a five-story block and a two-story block, for those that don't know the building very well. The five-story element sits on what we call a plinth or base that actually projects out, and what you can see in the image there is, the lower level creates essentially a terrace that we'd like to take advantage of and turn that into a viable, open-air terrace for everything from dining, casual seating, and activities for the residents. You can imagine that it'll have a nice hardscape surface, it'll have some furniture out there, perhaps some umbrellas, and it'll really animate the building with the activity. On that lower level, we'll also be adding some shade canopies just to protect from solar gain, but that will also add a little bit of character to the building as well. So there'll be a complete facade enhancement of the lower base and the five-story tower, as well as to add some stone material to sort of ground the building on the two-story side. And some of the samples that you see there on the side of the courtroom depict sort of the flavor of what we're intending, sort of a natural-looking stone in combination with what the existing building has, is concrete and glass, which we typically find is a nice combination. It's really luring for residents to want to come in and have that nice mix, it gives it a little bit more of a residential character, notwithstanding the fact that it's a five-story tower. The materials you see, made reference to the fact that there'll be porcelain tiles, just to give you a sense for what we're thinking in terms of interior finishes, again, carrying the exterior renovation through to the interior and completely renovating the project. The building sits on a wonderful site, it's a large enough site for this particular type of use, for personal care and assisted living. It's more site than we actually need as far as parking goes, so the few utility structures that appear on the site, and all of the paving, will likely be reduced, eliminated and reduced to allow for just enough parking to service the building and the staff, of course, and guests. And there you see on the site plan there, what you see in the dark black is existing paving that will keep, that will service loading and parking, that's all that we need. And in the lower left-hand side, we see a lot of green, currently that's paving, that's a parking lot as well. We don't need all that parking lot, but in fact, what we will do is convert that more to landscaping features, so grass, trees, shrubs, which again, serves both purposes, enhancing the community, but also serves the residents that will have in the building. They'll likely need some nice grounds to create some, again, some passive activity, likely have some gazebos and some benches and some, just a nice amenity for folks to walk through and around with, with their families. So in large part, we're going to be reducing the amount of impervious coverage, it'll improve the stormwater drainage on the site as well, not to mention the fact that it'll be a much and more enhanced amenity for the community. Likewise, there'll be added landscaping on the front side of, on the Adams Street side as well, to create some shade for the parking, some shade for the building as well. Again, we don't need all that parking anyway that is currently there in the building, so it's a great opportunity for us to reduce that, to serve both functions. So again, it's, this, you should consider as a full rehabilitation. The only thing you might recognize at the end of the project of the building is just its proportion and its size as it exists today, but other than that, it should be essentially a clean, new-looking building, fresh with some great materials and obviously the activity that is born by the residents that use the facility. That was it.
If I could just, I appreciate your presentation, and one thing that Councilwoman Cullen and I, and I know Mr. D Giuseppe really liked about this group, was the architectural design without a doubt, love the pictures, thinks, think it looks beautiful and are really banking on that happening. But equally important, if not more important to us, is what's going to be in there. So if you can just be very clear to the people, because there are some ideas and theories out there that just aren't true about what we've actually been considering, so if you can just have everyone be rest assured about what it is that you are actually planning on doing in there, I know you said it, but if you could just...
Right, well, the two things that we wanted to make sure everyone understood tonight was, one, the use, and one, what we're trying to do here before we leave tonight. The use is going to be personal care, independent living, nothing but that. After talking to the Redevelopment Authority, as well as the council people, we understand this is what's going to work for Bristol Borough. We are not looking to put anything but that in.
And can you just...
Again, I will say...
And I appreciate that. And for those people out there that maybe just want even a little bit more clarification as to what personal care and, and independent living is, if you could just describe that a little further.
Essentially, it's housing for seniors, so there is the, the age component, but there's also a level of assistance. Now, this is not to be confused with nursing home, where there's full healthcare provided, that's not what's happening here. Personal care by definition is a facility that, that is open for 24 hours for an extended period of time, for folks to reside in, that are, have availability to food and services, personal services, that might be changing, it might be sort of cleaning services, those sort of services. Perhaps at, at the heaviest, it might be just assistance with taking medications, but there will be no healthcare provided, nor will this be a market-rate apartment that brings schoolchildren and other ages to bear as well. So specifically seniors, independent living and personal care, and I just described to you what levels of those, those require.
So just for the record, and I know that we've talked to Ed and Chris and yourself several times, and I think what the perception Greg wants to clear up is that people, there are people that are going around trying to scare people, saying they're going to turn this into a psychiatric center, a drug center, a rehab...
This is not going to be a rehabilitation center for drugs or anything like that? It's not going to be...
We all know that, but we're trying, we want to set the record clear that Lorraine and Greg has made that known to this council, made it known to you, and made it known to their constituents, that there will be nothing here that will ever jeopardize that section of Bristol.
That's correct.
I think what, what Ed and Chris is trying to poll council tonight, and I know that Jeff and Bob are here this evening, Jeff, pardon me for not introducing you earlier, but I think what they're looking for is a six-month due diligence on the building, which means they have six months now to go out and market this building and bring a proposal back to the Redevelopment Authority, will bring that proposal back to us. There's been no dollar amounts discussed, there's been no settlements discussed, this is just, they're investing their own money into this project, and they want to know that the borough is willing to work with them and give them six months to put this deal together, and if not, then the, the borough will, we're still in the building, but we're giving them a guarantee that if they want to do the project, we're giving them the January 1st, 2014. So I don't have a problem with it, I know Greg and Lorraine doesn't have a problem with it, so I'm asking council, if you want to poll council, it doesn't need to be a motion to give them authorization to proceed, between our solicitor and the solicitor from the Redevelopment Authority, could come up with some kind of language that takes this building off the market for six months. And the borough in the meantime will keep maintaining the grass and keeping the property looking good. So Tony, do you have any problems with that?
No, I, I think it's a great project and excited that it's in the borough and, you know, it's great for the East Ward and hopefully be great for you guys too, so excited about it.
Pat, you just came in.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. President, I was at my daughter's honor night. Yes, I have to agree that, that this partnership we're developing tonight is very good, it's a positive thing for Bristol Borough, it's a positive thing for the East Ward.
Leo, you okay with it? Eddie?
Yeah, and just to make sure that people understand, which I work for, you know, the hospital, next to the hospital, and they were just acquired by Capital Health, and they are starting their own, like, they have their mental health unit that they're expanding, because I know a lot of people think that this is going to be for totally, you know, mental health patients, but, you know, there's only so many mental health patients this town can take, and most of them are going to be out there at the hospital. I know they just opened a new ward, I mean, they're doing a lot of work that's going to help those type of patients. So this is more for our seniors, which I think is a wonderful idea, and I thank you.
Fully supportive, looking forward to working with you, thank you.
Can I make just one other recommendation? Councilwoman Cullen and I drove by your building in Marsville, if you guys could just throw out there the address for anyone that wants to see the work that you've already done, because that was one of the things that really impressed us about the work that you've already done.
54 to 60 East Bridge Street in Marsville, and again, that was a project that we did through the Redevelopment Authority as well. And, you know, and that was one thing that I tried to stress, you know, talking to Bob White, that we are not only promoting on this project, it's going to be in Bristol Borough for a long time, we want it to be a project that the Borough Council is very pleased to have, as well as the Redevelopment Authority.
And perhaps someday can use, who knows, you know? Just saying.
I might be right there with that.
I'm just saying.
Long way ahead. Bob, do you want to, Bob?
Bob.
Anything to this, or Jeff?
I just wanted to tell you that I've worked with these gentlemen, excellent, do what they say they're going to do, and they get it done. And I'm very confident that it's a good thing for Bristol. We went through a lot of people, we talked to a lot of people, you know Ralph and Graham too, and it's not an easy thing to find somebody that's going to do what this community really needs.
I know that, just for, also for the record, that they were involved with the, if you heard his talk over the last several months with the Lutheran group, the reason that we end up shying away from that, it wasn't because it was a bad deal for the borough, the Lutheran group is tax-exempt, which means they will pay no taxes, and we didn't want a building that nobody paid taxes on. So therefore, they were the same developers, but they were going to team up with the Lutheran group, and once we found out that they were going to be tax-exempt, we said, I mean, it wasn't even a question, Greg and Lorraine at that meeting said, there's no way that we would accept a building that's not a tax-ratable property. So then Ed and Steve, Chris came back again, and Steve even did another presentation, then we met with him again last week, and I think that, I mean, Greg, Greg and Lorraine both advised them that they live literally a block or two from the building. So they want to make sure that their area is protected, and I think it's a win-win for this borough, and I, I know you guys will do an outstanding job if you put the deal together, and if you can't, there was no harm, harm done here, but I think Bob's right, I think you guys are going to be able to put the deal together and do a nice project. So we're okay with that, so our solicitor, you'll work out an agreement, let us...
Yeah, basically, we'll be working with the Redevelopment Authority, solicitor and attorneys for the developers, and come up with agreement, and then council will get to see that.
So it's going to be a redevelopment agreement?
Exactly, right.
The agreement will be between the Redevelopment Authority and their, their group, as long as council approves it, correct?
Correct.
All right, nobody else has any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want to take your stuff with you?
Thank you.
Steve, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we're done with everything, we're going to go to Mayor's Communication.
My mind, I was going to bring up about the softball game and baseball game tomorrow. Unfortunately, myself and the chief will not be able to attend it, we will be attending a function at the Spring Mill Country Club, I think it is, for the youth aid panels, it's their annual dinner. But they are going to have, like Ralph said, they're going to have bake sales there, donations, 50-50s, whatever, be making a donation on, in behalf of the Mayor's Office, that's all I have.
Okay, public participation, anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, go to the podium, please, state your name and address for the record.
Jose Acevedo, New Buckley Street, North Ward. I just want to, I have some brothers come up late March, they were born and raised in Bristol, Junior Alberto and Davy, they came up, they've been coming up every few years, and they've been seeing what's been going on in town. And on this visit, very pleased about how the town looks, very clean, very well-maintained. Last time they were here, they noticed that all the roads were, were paved, so they know that there's a lot of good things, sometimes we take it for granted because we're here every day, it's nice to hear from family members, or people I talk on the outside that, you know, Bristol's really got their stuff going on, and it's a testament to what's been happening the last 10 years. Like Ralph mentioned, I was going to mention that we've gotten a lot of grant money through the years, and I didn't know it was quite that much, but they just don't throw that money around to towns that don't, that are not, that are not run right, that don't have their stuff together, and that shows you that, what's been going on the last 10 years. They appreciate it, they know that stuff's going to be done the right way, and I appreciate what you guys have done. What I want to say is, they mentioned that the town is really, really clean, and now that the weather's getting nice, we're going to be out there, you know, throwing stuff on the bike path and the canal and stuff like that, so you can have a beautiful town, but if the residents are just going to trash it up, then it's for naught, so I'd request that the borough residents, and if you see something laying around, just go ahead and pick it up, or refrain from throwing stuff around, you know, we don't need that. I've taken upon myself, I've been inspired by the young fellow down at the, at the March, I live on New Buckley Street, and I would walk around to the post office to get my mail, and I would just see the trash in the employee parking lot, and I would just shake my head and shake my head, day after day. But unless I do something about it, I'm no better than the people throwing it on the ground, so I wonder, I talked to the postmaster, Dan Telle Sandero, and he's given me a commitment that he's going to get that thing in tip-top shape, and he's going to maintain it, so, so that's going to be a good thing. And I have a request for the manager, if we can contact Amtrak and see if they can clean up the embankment where the parking lot is, see if they can clean that up, because that's really, really trashy, and I don't know what their maintenance schedule is as far as picking up trash there, but that would be a great thing. And also, if they could replace all the, not all the bushes, but like, probably more than half the bushes they put on a garden-size street at the train station, they're, they're dead, so I don't know what, what we can do about that.
Well, I know we're working on, that's been an issue over the last year with this fence and everything that's going on, but I appreciate the compliments, because a lot of people from out of town, like you said, that come in, can't imagine how this town has transformed over the last seven or eight years, and like you says, we take it for granted because we're in town.
Right.
But if you don't run the street sweeper, which they didn't have before, and they didn't have, you know, the vehicles and the things that do their job, then you notice it, but since the town is so clean, I mean, you know, like I says, we don't realize it because we're here every day, but I really appreciate your comments.
But the other thing is, you're, when they left Bristol, they joined the Air Force, and when they came up this last time, they wanted to go over and check out the memorial, and what a great, and they have, just, they just raved about it, it's really, really nice, and they wanted me to personally thank Mr. Toasty and the Lollies and everybody else on that committee for the job they've done there, it's just a, it's a beautiful memorial to those who've served in this town.
Well, hopefully when they come back, they're going to see the boat docks.
That's what I was getting, because it seems like every two years they're coming up and they're seeing something new, they got to see that, they've got to see the Public Works Building, and two, two, three weeks after they left, just going to make announcements as far as the floating dock, so, so next time they come up, they'll be able to see that also, so it's really good, you guys have done a hell of a job, just keep it up. I know we have an election coming up, and I wish everybody well, good luck to everybody. Last time I spoke, we just had the, the November election, I thanked Mr. Lux and Mr. Mucie for their service, I welcomed Mr. Pezz and Mr. Divine and wished them well also. I appreciate the fact, nobody, not a lot of people can do this, and I always appreciate the fact that people can sit up there, and whatever, you know, whatever their convictions are, that they, they do what's best for, for this town, I have always appreciated that, so I just wish everybody who's running for office, I wish them the best of luck, and we'll go from there, so, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Pat McLaughlin, I live in the North Ward, I live on Third Avenue. I do not have a computer, I'm one of the seniors that does not have a computer, but I was handed this by several seniors that asked me, what is this, we're fed up platform? The gentleman here tonight that's making a, a senior center, I might be using it sooner than anybody else in the room, because I'm the closest one to it, but that should take priority over any hockey team, any senior, or not senior, but a hockey, a basketball team for adults. We're supposed to use our monies that we pay into taxes to give a few, a few, I say, privilege of playing basketball, we're having a hockey team, and this was put over the internet. They're going to make Bristol, they're going to make Mill Street a better place than what you, the previous council, has done. They're going to get on your wagon and drive it, this is, this is where they're going, because I think the job that you guys are doing, and Mr. Paz, I give you a lot of credit for this, the job that you are doing in this town, for this town, I am surprised at anyone who put Rifflass out like this. And just like I said, I think you guys have done a wonderful job, they put you down, they, they put the Vice President down, that you are not, oh yes, your name's on there too.
I know, I'm sure, dear.
Yeah, they're putting you down, and tell them to take a good look at themselves in the mirror tonight. And tell, tell themselves that you guys did not do a good job, or are not continuing to do a good job. I give you all the credit in the world, and I'm telling the seniors of this town, don't pay attention to this, because it's nothing but garbage. And if I didn't need this for tonight, that's where we'd go, in the garbage.
We're going to find out Tuesday if there's more sane people or crazy people.
Right, right.
That's it.
Okay.
And I have a trashcan right here, Pat, if you want to throw it in.
Okay, here. You want to see it? Oh, it's beautiful. Excuse me, not the head of the table. I moved that the first thing, where he wanted to be out along.
Yeah, it'll never happen. Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything? No? Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Good evening, everybody, Bridget Callahan, I live on Buckley Street, I just wanted to follow up on something I brought up last... I just wanted to follow up on something I brought up last week about pocket parking. There's a piece of property on Race and Plum Streets. I just wanted to know if we found out and can confirm if Borough does own it, and if so, can we possibly pave it and get some lines in there for some residents?
If you have a chance. The Borough does own an eight-foot strip in there and we're looking at it further to see what the cost would be and if the eighteen feet is going to be adequate enough. So we need a little bit, need a little more time.
One more time. Okay, thank you. And also, there's some potholes along Plum Street, mainly from Spruce to Climber. They're getting pretty really bad, especially with the rain we had. So if we can get that taken care of too.
I sent pictures to Mr. Waldron and I'm sure, I expect those to be taken care of this week.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Good evening. I'm Ken Bexler. I live on Cleveland Street. First of all, I think we all want to keep our fingers crossed that this assistant living facility will take, take hold and be a good thing for Bristol. Couple of things, I know this has been brought up a few times over, few times over the last couple of years, the lumberyard on the other side of the High Lines near Trent Avenue. Last week, I know you talked about the ConRel issue with the trains and the smell and the noise, excuse me, the noise and all. But that lumberyard has that mulch, I know Mr. Pezz talked about it and all. It's starting to smell again, people are complaining about it. I was wondering if anybody knows if the EPA was ever notified? Does anybody know? They have been notified? Is there, is there any updates on it, like what's going?
There's nothing that's harmful there.
There's nothing that's harmful?
Like when you put mulch down in front of your house.
Just the smell?
You smell a mulch.
Isn't there like formaldehyde or anything in that that could be?
Ground up wood.
Just ground up wood?
You know, when you have mulch put down in front of your house, you smell the odor and then it dissipates?
Yeah.
After, because you don't have a lot. I mean, that's basically where we're facing.
So it's just like all new, it's like, you know, it smells for a while, then that goes away, you know, they move it and then they get new and it smells again?
Right.
Oh, I know, people were complaining about it again. I noticed another issue. Last week, the Grundy Rank presented a $60,000 check to Council. I wanted to confirm that the Borough's still making the mortgage payment on the, on the Rank until 2025 of $650,000? Okay, just a minute. I brought this up to Mr. Pezz right before I came to the meeting. A resident on 200 block of Hayes Street mentioned again about those cars parking. He said he mentioned it to the Chief at the corner of Farragut and Hayes and Garfield, where it meets there. It's a nail salon, they park on the corner and you can't get through it. I mean, you can get through, but it's a two-way entrance and you can only get one car. So it says it's still happening, so if police presence can keep an eye on that. The Amish lease that you just worked out and you got the first check, that's, that's just a lease and, but it's now, and it's five thousand a year for five years, right? After this. And then, so they have a permanent, not ownership, correct, but they have the rights to that property for as long as they're at that location. Is that correct?
Basically.
So if they're there ten years or fifty years?
Right.
They're there, they paid their $50,000 and that's done?
Right.
Okay.
It's ground that the Borough would never use.
It's like an easement type thing?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's, that's it. And the other thing, I noticed that Councilman Divine has a flag on his desk, so that's a good thing.
He's a very good citizen.
All right, great. Thank you. Wonderful, thanks.
Well, I don't want to get into these flags, but I said before that Mr. Crowe, when they opened this, dedicated this building, made them flags for everybody. All right. Mr. Pezz.
Good evening. Bill Pezz, 1221 Pond Street. Tony's timing me? I saw you look at your watch. I'm going to be brief. I've been coming to council meetings for a long time. I'm not even going to say anything about Maria. I've been coming here a long time. And I can't remember a night when we've had better news. Mr. Dillon and I met for an hour and a half this morning with the representative from Landmark Towns, who was the former State Director of the Main Street Program from New Jersey. She was in charge of trying to revitalize main streets throughout the state of New Jersey. And she is flipping out with happiness about the potential for this dock. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands, it doesn't mean that someone's going to pull up in a boat and go to Mignonis Jewelry and buy a ring. What it means, it's that it's going to bring vitality to the street. It's going to bring vitality to the town. It's going to, it's going to give investors the sense that things are happening, because things are happening. And that's what, that's what attracts investors. So, and when you talk about the Redevelopment Authority, when you talk about the Bucks County Planning Commission, when you talk about Landmark Towns, these are the things, the people that we've, we had a person here Wednesday, I guess it was, we took a tour of Mill Street. The person, we stopped in to see, and we saw some shopkeepers. The person is the individual who was a Main Street consultant. He oversaw the revitalization of Hat Borough, which apparently has turned into a pretty nice place, and Percocci, which he's working at now. When we had the Mayor of Collingswood, New Jersey, they all said the same things, that the river is our most primary asset, that you build from there, you build from your business district, you build from your restaurants. Every town that has experienced a revitalization does it that way, except they don't have rivers and we do. And you, and you work out from there. So the people that do this for a living are very, very excited. And I'm glad that the community's excited and we're going to move forward with this and it's going to be a real good thing. I want to say one more thing about what Jose said, because it was, it was music to my heart. I mentioned last week, and we're going to put it up on our Borough website as soon as we can get Matt to do it, as we've said from the beginning, you guys do the things you can do for the, for the government. You guys do these kinds of big projects. What Raising the Bar is about is trying to get individual citizens empowered to do other things. And we're going to put a volunteer form on, on the website and invite every resident in town to tell us three things. What are your skills? What are your interests? And what's your time availability? And we will try to match those things with the need that we identify. There's no reason why, I remember, I forget what block it was, but there was a block in the West Ward and in the Cedar Street or Wood Street area, I think it was the Wood Street area, where the residents just had, they had their own little association, Gail Ofslaw and people like that had their own little association. They cleaned the block, they entered floats in the parade, they just showed community pride. And what we're trying to do is mobilize people into volunteer system so that we can do those things too. So every time, because we're getting flooded with ideas. The ideas are easy. It's implementing them, that's hard. So every time an idea surfaces, and we want to be able to hand that ball to somebody and let them run with it. So everyone in town, check the website in a week or so, or inbox me on Bristol Borough Raising the Bar on Facebook, and we'll get you a volunteer form. And Pat will hand you one, because you don't have a computer, so we'll give you one in paper, okay? And please encourage your friends and neighbors to do the same, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Mr. President, question. Are we still on with the DVD release for June?
We're on with the DVD, as we've said for a long time. We can release the DVD tomorrow. We have them, they're copied, we have the covers. The concern, the people that do this regularly say you don't want to waste it by just sending it out raw like that. You want to send it out with a package that talks to developers about why they should come here, what we have to offer and things like that. And so we're still working on presenting a package for June. And then, and then once you guys approve that, once you guys put your endorsement on that, then we package the DVD and send it out together. I think that's a much better approach. Thank you, Pat. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Anybody else? Okay, that ends public participation. Before we get into our agenda, I know that this fence issue's been a nightmare down at the Little League field. And I was contacted by Jose Rosado and Tim Dugger, who are the President and Vice President of Little League, and also Coach Buster Spadacino, who coaches the girls' teams. And they asked me if I could run down a field and meet with them. So I did, and basically they're here this evening to talk about what's going on with this fence. And I think there's been some misperception, and I'm not accusing anybody of the wrong thing, but there is never, Mr. Divine, there has never been a girl where a ball came within inches from her face from a home run. So I don't know who gave you that information, but the coach from that team is here, who said that that never happened. So basically, I think we shut a playground down for the last month because Council was so nervous about somebody getting hit with a ball that we all panicked. And I'm not saying we don't need to do something because safety comes first, but I mean, you have Buster Spadacino here, who coached that girls' team, was the only home run hit this year. It barely made it over the fence near center field and never, ever came within any inches of anybody's face that almost got hit with a ball. So, go ahead.
Well, I have, so I wasn't there, right? So there were two people that gave me written statements. One of the people were from the North Ward watching the game on their porch.
Do you three guys want to go to the podium, please? And I'm not going to get into a major debate tonight, but yeah, Tony, you'd at least, no, I mean, at least you could explain why you got this information that wasn't.
Right, well, that's what I'm going to do. So, and the woman, who's killed and was got hit with a ball, wrote a written explanation. That woman said, now, the bottom line is this, now, what I want is just an honest opinion. Do you think that that playground is put in the right place in between two home run fields?
Do I think it's put in the right place? No. Does it need a net? I don't think so, because it's the people, how about the people at the concession stand when a foul ball comes from Little League field? But how about the people in the minor league field when Bristol High School, High School, the boys hit a foul ball? I mean, everybody's in jeopardy.
Here's, here's the difference.
I mean, can you do it for a safety reason? Absolutely.
No, I'm saying, the difference is, what you're saying, as I understand, is that there's an inherent danger of you going to a baseball game and getting hit with a ball. The only difference is, the only difference is, the people that you're talking about are watching a game.
Not necessarily.
I know, not necessarily, but we put a playground in between, we did it. We put it there. Those kids that are playing there aren't paying attention to the game. They're playing, right? So now, with that being said, I talked to, I mean, it's, it's the director, she's a PhD at Northern Iowa, Playground Safety, right? And she's the authority one. And there's no, and she said to me, there's no way in the world that that should have been placed there at the beginning. And what's going to happen is somebody gets hit with that ball, and it's going to happen, because that home run that was hit, what year or year girl did it hit there?
Fifteen years old.
Fifteen years old. So a fifteen-year-old girl hit a ball over the fence, right? And it landed in the playground, at least hit a kid in the face.
First of all, I'm not here to argue with, but I was standing on third, so wherever was across the street, I was probably closer to them. And I watched the whole thing. And it landed over the fence, didn't go into the playground. I stood right there. Now, I was probably closer than, the next close person was the lady in left field, the girl. It didn't go near anybody.
The next close person was the mom who was there.
I thought she was sitting on the porch.
No, no, no. That was, that was a North Ward resident. The mom was from Middleton. It was a parent from Middleton. It wasn't even anybody from Bristol.
Well, I think you got the coach here telling you that the kid.
I seen it. I mean, I seen it.
Listen, I'm going to talk, listen, I don't care what everybody's saying. And I know you guys are coaches, I know you're there at the baseball field, like, I don't, to me, I don't care what you guys think about the idea of you don't think that people get hit with home runs. It's common sense that somebody is going to get hit with that ball. Now, we got a game tomorrow, Tuesday night, there's going to be girls playing in the Shamy and Penbury. They hit six home runs in one game against each other.
All right, and I understand that, but are them kids at the playground any different than the kids at the concession stand?
Of course.
Or the, or the kids at the tee ball field that are playing there? I mean, well, how is it any different though, man?
Here's the difference, Buck. The difference is, we put a playground there in between.
I didn't get it there.
Look, I'm not saying Buck is going to be responding, I'm talking about the Borough going to be responding.
But we put the fields there seventy years ago and the people are still walking around that. I think Timmy and Jose had the right, I mean, you guys can speak, they're there every day and there's kids playing all over that field.
There's kids that play between the minor league field, the tee ball field, at the flagpole.
Yeah.
They're constantly playing. I mean, not paying attention, having a catch, playing with football, throwing a football, okay? So why is this kid not important, but this kid over here is? Same concept, isn't it? There's a home run, it could hit him here too, right?
Totally different concept. What you're not understanding, dude, is that we put, we put the playground there, right?
Okay, but these kids played Sam Lot football right there.
Okay. But we didn't put the grass there.
True you did.
No, we didn't. It wasn't there.
Well, they made fields. They made it grass area, right?
No, it wasn't there. It doesn't matter. All I'm saying is this, if you guys feel and cancel the council, I spoke my piece. If you guys don't feel that it's necessary to have a fence and council agrees with it, you got it. I don't have a problem. My goal is to protect the kids. All I know is this, we all care about the kids, right?
Absolutely.
We all talk about caring about the kids. The problem is, when I sent this email out, not one person on council even pulled to find out exactly what happened or, you know, if the kid was all right.
So you stayed up.
Hey, I didn't get any email. You were, you were there.
You didn't say nothing.
We didn't respond to you.
I got a phone call asking about a home run that was hit.
Okay, look, here's what I'm saying. The bottom line is this, the bottom line, if council agrees that they don't need a fence, that's fine. All I'm saying is, if either one of you guys' kids gets hit in the head, you ain't going to be happy, right? And there's going to be a problem.
Okay, let me ask.
We got, what's going to happen? Are you going to be okay if something happens to your kid?
Let me ask you.
Are you going to be okay with that?
Absolutely, because it's entering your risk.
Okay, well, there you go.
Okay, first of all, you walk on any complex, it's enter at your own risk.
Exactly.
Okay? That's why I called the eleven presidents last night in our district and asked them, what do they do with their complex? Silence. Watch out for fly balls. Watch out.
How many of them have playgrounds in the middle of the home?
Oh, Tony, I have no idea.
Then you're not asking the right question.
I'm, I'm asking the right question, because.
No, you're not.
All right, let me ask you this, Tony. You put a fence up in front of both sides of that playground, okay? The next day, a kid gets hit in center field with a ball in the head. What did your fence help?
You're not understanding the idea of the fact, we put a playground there, dude. We're done with it.
I understand you put the playground there.
It has nothing to do with another kid.
Sure does. That kid over here is just as important as that kid on the playground.
But I'm saying, the kid's not important. All I'm saying is, you're talking about two different instances.
All right, all right. Well, I can tell you, for a couple of things, as rules, through the rulebook, Little League rulebook, the minimum fence requirement is four feet, maximum is six, okay? Also, there's, and there's only been six home runs hit in the whole season so far down there. Our league, I can't account for the high school, because I have no idea. But there's five in Little League and one from softball. Yeah, and that's it. And not one of them went to the playground.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, you're saying, you see, it's not being proactive. What you're saying is, it didn't happen yet, so it's okay. What I just told you, there was a game between two softball teams, the Shamy and Penbury, in the same game there were six home runs hit.
Yeah, but.
What do you think the chances are that there's going to be a home run hit?
I think the issue. I tell you, there's a good chance a home run's going to be hit. But who's to say it's not going to go on the playground, Tony? Who's, who's to say it's not going to go? Who's to say it's not going to go?
No, it's a different.
That's what I'm saying.
I got, you're talking this day, you got.
Wait one minute, wait one minute. Jose, do you have anything you want to add to this?
As far as, as far as the field goes, I think the only thing we could do is put signs around it. In the parking lot and every entrance, be aware of flying balls. Balls can hit you. It's what I was.
That's what I usually see when I go, and I went to many, many games with my daughter, is usually play at your own risk, you have to watch out for the fly balls. As a parent, watching a game, I'm not always watching the game. I sit there, I start talking to her or him, and I don't watch until somebody screams. That's when you turn around and look. I mean, it can happen anywhere on the field.
And if we put them in at the edges on the playground, because these parents are bringing their kids to the playground, I mean, the parents need to be aware also that there are balls that could be flying in any direction. I think it's more dangerous for a kid to get hit with a ball with a foul ball than it would ever be with a fair ball. The odds of, I mean, a batter can go up there and hit four or five foul balls at once to right field and to the bleachers, or behind to the concession stands, and then, and then parents and them kids are not paying attention.
Yeah.
As far as that playground goes, before that playground was there, then kids would use that same spot as to play football. I mean, I don't want to see a kid ever get hit. My kids played that playground, too. But I don't want to see a kid get hit down right field line, any part of that, that complex.
But it's a base, but it's a baseball facility.
It is. I mean, if, when I used to play in the minor leagues, they would have, as you walk in the stadium, signs, you know, beware, be alert, foul balls, any ball hit. And, you know, it's just, it just comes with the territory. It's a shame that anyone ever gets hit, but.
Now, I don't think anybody sitting here wants to see a kid get hit, but let me just go over this again. We have a Little League rule that says no fence can be more than six feet high. So, that rule's out putting up anything above six foot.
Right.
Or you're not going to be sanctioned on the Little League. Here's my recommendation before I get into council. We closed the playground during high school softball games, because it's one hour a night that they have a softball game, okay? Buster's team hit one homerun, and it was, it's a shame that this council was under the impression that it missed somebody's face by inches where it was never even near the playground and never even hitting the playground.
Buck, I mean, Ralph, I don't mean to interrupt, but I have a statement from the mother.
I'm not saying that.
I never saw the statement.
No, I'm not saying that you came here and lied. You have a statement that's not true.
Okay.
Because Mr. Spadacino is the coach of that team who's telling us that that homerun that was hit by one of his players, and his brother and father was standing out there, was nowhere near anybody. So, whether somebody's lying, that, it doesn't matter right now. The thing is, it's like closing a swimming pool in the summertime for kids. That playground is eighty percent open, because the only thing isn't there right now are the swings. They're using it every day.
They're taking down the barriers, everything.
Please, what was the difference?
So, my theory is, wait a minute, let me finish. My theory is, we put the swings back on air tomorrow, we let the kids start using it, we have a sign right here that we could post tomorrow near the playground. And in the meantime, we'll still work towards some kind of netting or some kind of something that will protect that area.
Well, how about the net you got behind, like, the one that goes straight across?
Across the softball field.
Yeah, if you just put that out there, would that make everybody breathe easier? I mean.
Well, I'm saying, we don't know what the solution is right now, but I think keeping this closed, and guess what? Parents have to watch their kids. If you've got a four, or five, or six-year-old kid on that playground, and you know somebody could hit a homerun, you should be paying attention to your kids.
Ralph, can I say something?
Yes.
Um, I, one thing, well, first of all, I mean, I, we've been going back and forth on this a lot, and I, I don't want to keep making it a back and forth, but to, to just blanketly say that everyone, basically saying that the rest of council doesn't care, it's offensive, and it's wrong, because I, in fact, when you said, who do you want me to call to ask if they're all right? I guess you, I guess that's who I should have called. I don't know if that doesn't meet your standard, but.
What are we talking about?
No, no, we're talking, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let me finish, all right? Let me finish. All right? So, first, you make a blanket statement that we didn't call anyone. I guess you wanted us to call you. Second of all, it's disingenuous, because you know that I texted you this week to say, did you have that meeting at the softball field? So, what you are saying is you're making it sound like we don't care. I spoke with Ralph for a very long time about that. We talked about the hour shutdown. So, you've got to stop, look, everyone's concerned, everyone. You've got to stop making these blanket statements that just accuse us of things that aren't true, Tony. They're not true. And it's offensive. So, I'm not finished. I am not finished. So, the other thing that I would like to say, and I think it's important that we talk about, is I think we need to settle something tonight. I do. And I think your hour recommendation is a good one. I think at least going into tomorrow night, we should say that the softball field, or, excuse me, the playground should be closed when there's a high school girls' softball game going on. I think, you know, we have not come up with any real good solutions, but this seems to be at least a viable one for now. And that's, that's.
Well, I talked to people on Jefferson Avenue who bring their kids there in the morning, nine o'clock, ten o'clock. They says, why can't we use this field to put my granddaughter on the swings when nobody's even here? This is ridiculous that this thing is shut down. It's been here three years, nobody ever got hit with a ball, and not that it can't happen, just like Dugger and Jose and Buster said, you can get hit anywhere. And that was my argument from the beginning. I spent seventeen straight years at them fields, and I don't ever remember anybody, thank God, getting hit with a foul ball or any kind of ball that, you know, really hurt somebody. Not that it can't, it could happen. Look, you could step out on Jefferson Avenue and get hit by a car. So, anything can happen at any time. And we're here for the, like Greg said, we're not turning our head on these kids. But to keep this thing closed down because of a statement that was made that a ball came within inches of busting somebody's face open, I have a problem with that. Tony?
All right. Just to answer Greg, you said that it's a blanket statement, and I'm accusing you guys of not. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, in this case, right, did I send you an email?
Yes.
Yeah, I sent you an email. Did we just talk about that, the baseball field? My point is that there is, you know, there is a present danger there.
Sure.
Right? There is a present danger.
And we all acknowledge that something should be done.
Greg, let me finish, please. It's, there is a danger there, and on opening day, opening day, a kid.
No.
It was opening day.
I'm sorry.
All right. So, opening day, the first day that we, we already had this, there's never been a ball hit, there's no one going to get hit. Opening day, a ball gets hit over fence. Fifteen-year-old hits it over fence. And a kid almost gets hit in the face. I got it from two people. Greg, you rolling your eyes, like, you think I'm, you think I'm making?
No, I'm not rolling. I don't think you're making it up. I think, I believe Buster. How about that? You don't believe Buster? I do.
That's not, I don't believe Buster.
Yes, that's what you're saying. You're saying you don't believe Buster.
Actually, the kid, actually, the kid where it went picked it up and brought it to the girl.
This is what I'm saying, is it was brought up, you would think on the first day that you would, you would show some, you know, you would show some, you would want to know what happened, you know, since you were there at the field, going through all of it, and you told me that you would support some netting.
Yes, I did.
You told me you would support.
Yes, I did.
So, I thought that you would, so I thought that you would call and say, Tony, that's unbelievable.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't meet your standard to call you.
It's not a standard. All I'm saying is.
This is frustrating everyone that's watching it. We should make a decision on something.
I agree. But all I'm saying is, you made a statement, a blanket statement that I made. I'm just telling you, I sent you an email, I didn't get a response, so to me, it feels like you don't care.
You live in the 21st century. I text you once a week. Like, you didn't get an email? Sorry. You didn't get a phone call? I apologize. I didn't use the phone.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is if you actually care.
Because, Tony, I'm at my limit, man. You just, you're making blanket statements, and I have my limit. Yes, you are.
What's the blanket statement?
Mr. Brad.
Blanket statement. Not for you.
I think the reason, main reason we're here is, we're getting a lot of complaints from parents.
Right.
From, from T-ball, from all, minor league, Little League, residents that are there, just asking us, why did we shut down the playground? We didn't shut down the playground. You know, these, these kids, these kids want to, they, you can't tell a four- or five-year-old kid they can't play on the playground. You got a shiny toy there and they want to play, swings. And it's hard for us to kind of police the.
And we can't police it. We had cops there. We just can't do it.
No.
So, we wanted to open it last week, but we asked Mr. Devine, he said absolutely not. He wanted it to remain closed. So, here's my theory. I'm going to poll council, open it with the understanding, we're going to do some signage, and we'll continue working on the safety, even maybe moving it. But that's, to keep this thing closed right now, I think is ridiculous. And that don't say somebody tomorrow may get hit with a ball, but that same person has a chance to get in. And I believe Buster when he says that ball did not come within inches from somebody's face. So.
I guess my only caveat is, can, can we say it's closed during the high school girls' game? Can we do that?
Sure. I think our solicitor has said, if somebody gets hit with a ball, we're not liable.
Right.
Not that that's right, that a kid gets hit with a ball, you know, we don't care. I think the people want to use this playground.
I agree.
So, you're okay with opening it tomorrow? With some sign, this sign here, and maybe something if we can't get made said, stay off of equipment during high school girls' game?
Yeah, that would make me most comfortable, yes.
Tony, you want it open tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Pat?
Um, I think this here is a real simple, everybody puts down the swords here. There's, it's, you always go back and use simplicity. If we were to get, just on where the playground is, an eight-foot fence put up with a mistnet as a corridor, just as a precautionary guard, that would make me feel much more comfortable. Not be closing it, having it come in and go out. But a mistnet that stops a golf ball can stop a softball. And that is very inexpensive, it won't hurt the ballplayers, and it takes away the potential, the potential for risk.
Pat, just so you know, we're dealing, Jim called the original playground company, and last week you were in here, and I said there's about thirty-some feet to the closest part of the playground. Mr. Devine said it was four or five feet. It's thirty-one feet.
Thirteen feet.
It's thirty-one feet.
On the back way.
Can I just, yeah. All right, let me just finish. The playground company is saying you can't put a fence right against the playground, because somebody that could trip and fall may hit that. So, now we're creating fence, fence, play, you know what I mean? So, you got, you got these chutes, these alleys that they're going to be going through. So, even if you put a fence here, you're going to have to put a net here. It's, we got to figure this out to see how it's going to work. But to keep it closed in the meantime, with all this PR that's been out there and press, if a parent doesn't know by now to take precaution for their kid, then I don't know what else we can do. So, I don't want to talk another hour on this. If you're okay with opening it or keeping it closed?
I would like to see it opened, but I would really like to see that fence that I just mentioned.
All right, we're going to work tomorrow. Do you want it open or closed?
No, I'll open it up.
Leo. Betty.
Um, for opening it, but remember tomorrow night's when all the high schools are going to be there.
They're going to be on that playground anyway, Betty.
Okay, I'm just saying.
We're going to get this.
And I honestly have to say, and I hope people don't hate me for saying it, but when you take your children there, you have to be responsible for your children. You have to be aware where your kids are, and unfortunately, it might happen there, it might happen by the concession stand, it might happen by the bathroom. When they play softball at one field, and where the netting, where they pitch in that one thing where they practice, those nettings that we have back there, you don't know how many times those balls go flying over there. And, and it's just, it's, got to watch your kids. We can't do it for you. I don't want to see anybody get hurt, but either open it back up, or I got a great spot in West, in the West Ward, we'll take it. We'll take it.
Problem.
Betty needs to come out of her shell. Betty needs to learn how to speak her mind. I mean, no, open it up. Open it up.
Open the playground tomorrow. Put some signs up. Let these kids start using it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
I had a couple more.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tony.
Chief, I'm so lost.
Thank you.
The stop sign, I carry those, and the stop sign is pretty street. The cars just don't stop, okay? They just keep on coming through. I know you stepped it off, because I've seen them pulled over. They just keep doing.
I was there myself today also, and the presence of the police car slows them down and makes them stop, but we'll stay on it.
And tomorrow's going to be a very busy night, so we really need to have police presence there more than ever, because we're going to have a lot of out-of-towners, and they do. They fly by there like they don't even see the stop sign.
How about those crosswalk signs? At the library. Yeah, at the library, yeah. Something like that?
Pardon me, Tony?
The crosswalk signs, like.
What I asked the manager to do, and I'm glad you brought this up, we're looking into a stop sign that has a red flashing beacon on it. So, as people come down, this thing's going to flash, hopefully, it's going to stop them, and we wanted to put them along Jefferson Avenue.
Okay.
I'm going to take it a step further. Can, between the mayor and the chief, can we assign the police car there all night tomorrow before this game until after the game to be out there with their lights on? Even if we got to bring somebody in and pay them overtime?
Chief, can we put the bike guys out there tomorrow?
I think you need a car with lights on.
Yeah, we do. Something, need something marked. We had a, I'll have to see what the schedule looks like, because we had to utilize the part timers for something else.
Does council have a problem?
Will you figure out a way, your chief? Yeah, figure out a way.
Since it's such, since it's such a big night for Bristol, we want a cop there with lights on, slowing traffic down. That takes care of that. All right, number two, I'm sorry.
A couple more things. I would also say that you guys rented the Little League field, and it paid off. We got the Knight and Boys All-Stars this year for the first time in a long time. So, you know, that's, that's great. And we also got the girls' softball. We got the junior girls, junior girls, and senior girls this year. So, we got, we got like sixty percent of all the All-Stars at our facility this year.
Great. Your hands full.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of work. Steve will keep those through here. And I think that covered it. That's everything.
We're still, once the season's over, we're going to have a meeting, see what this council could do next year to improve the facility even more. Because your season's almost over also, right?
Well, we'll run till the end of July with All-Stars, so-
But I mean, the, the bulk of it's over. Bristol High School's done.
Next week.
Next week. Buster's team's almost done, right?
Yeah.
So let's open the playground and move on.
Okay.
Thank you. Number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes 4, 8, and 5, 6. Accept the treasurer's report for March. Accept the police and DJ's report for April. Accept fire chief's report for April. Accept inspector's report for April. Accept planning commissioner report 415. And accept the harbor report and decisions 429.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Pezit. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number four.
Mr. President, for the ordinance, I'd like to adopt the amendments to the zoning ordinance.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Polanski. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, this, this was a special meeting. I just want to, uh, why wasn't it highlighted on our packet, usually is in red, like that we want to be meeting earlier? Does he, does nobody really show up for that?
It wasn't a council meeting.
Okay, but I thought we would just usually be informed if, you know, we're having a special meeting.
Sure, Marie, you want to answer that?
We were informed, it was on the memo.
Yeah.
No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm talking about on the outside. You know, on the outside, you usually put it in red, like we have. I was just wondering if there was a reason why.
Open the pockets.
All right, um, what is the difference? What is the difference, um, on, on the ordinance that we had previously that were amended? I'm reading aloud the sliding yard requirement of 20 feet total, no less than five feet. What was it prior to this that were amended?
You want to answer?
Yeah. Um, the current ordinance provides that there's got to be 10 feet on each side for, for most residential. This provides that there still needs to be 20, but it can be a sliding scale no less than five. So you could have five on one side, 15 on another side, eight, 12, whatever. This is pretty standard in the industry. We actually discussed changing it to this when we redid the ordinance. For some reason, we didn't. And because it keeps coming up, the zoning board thought, you know what? Uh, we, we end up granting these variances anyway, why don't we just change it like everybody else has?
So, the other question, then what would be the difference if we just do 10 feet and five and five? What would be the difference of adding 15 on one side and only five on the other? Why wouldn't we just do five and five then?
Because you want to remain 20 feet between homes, which is a good thing for the fire company. If they got to come in and fight a fire, they're not, if you do five and five, now the homes will be 10 feet apart instead of 20 feet.
Okay, so you need at least one side where there's going to be-
Five.
At least 15.
And once, it's got to be 20 feet between houses.
Right.
Right, well, what I'm saying, if there, if we're changing it, now we're saying one side could be five. If I'm, I don't know, unless I'm seeing it wrong. One says, you have a house in the middle, right? We're saying now you can have five feet on the left side, but you have to have 15 on the right. Am I, am I saying this right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. So what is the magic number? So-
But the next house now has to have five feet to make it 20. You still got to maintain 20 feet.
Okay, so that house next to it, one on the right, would have to have 15 to compensate for five. Okay, got it.
It is, they're trying to save people money that go in front of the zoning board, that are going in front of zoning board for a couple of these items that never get turned down.
Got it. No, I'm just trying to figure it out. Looking at, see what the difference is, you know, just continuing to learn, that's all. That's the only question I have.
Any other questions? It's on the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the acceptance of the S.T. Hudson Engineers' proposal dated April 22nd, 2013, to conduct a hydrographic survey in the amount of $6,000.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All, Mr. Devine?
Yeah, the only question I have is, is I see 6,000 to be ratified, and then is this like a precursor to the 50,000? So we had to do the 6,000, $6,000 survey first before we did the 50,000? Are they connected together?
They're, they're done in phases. The first phase was to determine if there was any dredging needs to be done. And that survey was done, and there's the map on the, uh-
That was the $6,000, right?
Yes, that's, that's been done. And now the next phase is the geotechnical investigation, uh, which is before council. We just got this proposal, uh, late Friday.
Gotcha, thanks, that's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Let's go, I skipped number five.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll do five. And I'd like to make a motion authorizing the advertisement of an ordinance to adopt the codification of Bristol Borough ordinances.
I have a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept S.T. Hudson's Engineers' proposal dated May 7th, 2013, for geotechnical investigation for floating day boat docks and access pier in the amount of $50,000.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Just like to comment that any money we spend is reimbursable from the $2.5 million grant that we got. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the time extension for NovaCare land development to July 13th, 2013, per developer's email dated May 7th, excuse me, 2013.
Second by Ms. Trenell. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I did see the email that Mrs. Velspeak has sent to the developer, to Mr. Mizaki, stating that he had to respond if he was looking for an extension, and in the event that he didn't respond, that he would lose his, his application. Um, I saw in the next email, Mr. Mizaki, Mr. Mizaki simply stated, "I'm, I'm requesting an extension." So I'm going to, I'm going to approve this, this motion. However, I'd very much like to see Mr. Mizaki come in and discuss, you know, what his proposed timeframe is, what the holdup is, and, and what he believes his, his final, you know, his final date will be for having the project done. So I think we should approve the, the, the extension, but I think he owes a bit of an explanation to this council in terms of what's going on.
Can I, can I also make a comment on that?
Sure.
Uh, I totally understand all of Robin's concerns, and I do have a question for Mr. Dillon or Mr. Solano on this. I'm not sure who'd be the right person to answer it. But, uh, Mr. Mizaki has assured me that what the step is that's holding him up now is PennDOT approval. So I guess the question I would have for you guys is, if he did in fact file for that, would we, the borough, be notified that he has done so? And if we would, have we done?
We haven't been notified, uh, not necessarily. I mean, I can reach out to PennDOT to see if he's filed.
Sure, no, I just didn't know if it was standard practice or not, that they would notify us.
Actually, he would have to show the permit to our engineer and to the borough that it's been approved.
Typically, it's the developer's engineer that would keep us up to date what's going on.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's more my concern, is that I don't want, I don't want PennDOT to come back to us to explain it. I want the, the developer, so.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes, I would like to know, um, why we need to bring the developer when we've given time extensions, six times to the Amish, and seven or eight times to Walmart.